And the next item on the agenda is resolution to step up to reduce the number of people with mental illnesses in our jail.
Oh, yeah.
I do, yeah. Hi Ed.
Oh, yeah.
Welcome.
And, uh...
Hi Judy.
Hi.
So, the stepping up initiative is a, uh, I'm sorry, a national initiative that's being run by the National Association, the counties, county officials, and then American Psychiatric Institute and a number of other organizations, really to improve mental health. The stepping up initiative is a, is basically a, I don't know what the term would be, you know, like a national effort to share information and work collaboratively between, you know, multiple entities in order to reduce the number of people with mental illness in jail. Due to a variety of reasons, you know, many of which we've talked about on a regular basis, from the Olmstead Act to, you know, various cuts in human services funding to changes in strategy, the country as a whole has a real problem with persons with mental illness ending up in jail. And they kind of define mental illness as, you know, obviously like more traditional forms as well as, you know, drug and alcohol, substance use disorder. So, the whole idea is, is the resolution that I'm proposing is a non-binding resolution that basically states that the Warren County will become a stepping up county. And so, we will join, at this point, I think about seven or eight other counties in the state, and the number keeps growing, I have a hard time keeping track of it. Certainly, there are other states that are more proactive with this particular program. But it's a non-binding resolution that basically states that we'll be, you know, we'll make an effort to reduce the number of people with mental illness in jail. Now, there's, you know, just by passing a resolution, it doesn't mean that it ties us to do anything, it just basically states that, you know, we're gonna make an effort to do that and that, you know, there are some steps, we're, there's some steps that we're gonna take to try to make that, to expand that effort.
Would you like to expand on those steps?
Yeah. So, as, if you read the resolution, first of all, it kind of states a couple of things that the county is already doing. The, the courts have been very proactive in Warren County with, you know, Judge Schifrin and others being involved in the treatment court, which has had a very high success rate. You know, that would be an example of something that we could work with the judiciary and help them, help facilitate that program, help expand that program. There are programs within the jail that we can evaluate and expand, you know, for treatment. As part of putting this together, I met, I've met with Lori McDonne, the prison coordinator for treatment in the prison, and also met with, there are shared information, or met with, you know, John Collins, the warden and others. And everybody really has been very supportive of this initiative, you know, the idea of trying to figure out ways, whether it be through researching what other counties are doing that's successful, or whether it's, you know, trying to cobble together new solutions, you know, through our own system. But, you know, the, everybody's kind of on the same, in the same perspective of something needs to be done, you know, especially when Warren County has a real issue with this, and a lot of that has to do with a combination of the reduction in hospital beds at the state hospital and the closing of forensic unit. It's no coincidence that in the past 10 years, you know, since that, our jail population has almost doubled, and that a good portion of the people in the jail are, have serious mental health issues. You know, in some cases, the only sort of resource that we have right now is the Torrance facility, which is south of Pittsburgh, which is a state hospital operated, and I'm not sure where, south of Pittsburgh, everyone just says it's a ways away. But they have long waiting lists, you know, it's really hard to get people into that system. These are people that are, guards are not trained to deal with, you know, and so they make the best of what they have to do. So, this, these types of situations in our jail create a, a many levels of liability, and the more we can do to try to channel them out of the system into treatment and into, you know, a path that's more, that's gonna have a better outcome for them and for us, it'll be a win for everybody. So, one of the big reasons, one of the other big reasons to do this, or that I'm proposing to do this is, once you basically make the resolution, you really get tapped into their network, you know, their informational network, so it's much easier to get appropriate information from NACO on this, and, I mean, not that it's challenging now, but, you know, they have network events for stepping up counties. I, I think it'll be a lot easier to get ahold of other counties that are stepping up counties and try to, you know, take, you know, model some of our programs after the programs that they've set up. And, you know, I, it just, they're, when looking at it, it didn't seem like there was a reason not to do it. You know, we, everybody recognizes the issue, and now it's a matter of actually trying to turn the corner and do something about it. Not that anybody isn't thinking about, there's a lot being done, there's just, there's probably a lot more that can be done. And like I said, I got very positive responses from the DA, from District Attorney Rob Green, from the public defender, from Lori McDonne in jail, the warden, everybody that I showed this to thought that it was a very good, that it was a positive effort and it's something that should probably be undertaken, you know. And again, it's just, is to make the focus, trying to channel these people out of the jail system into a system where they're getting, you know, some type of treatment.
All right, sounds good. Thank you. Any questions from anyone?
Would this make the county eligible for any grants on the matter?
Well, I think that it will allow us to get more information on grants, for people to make recommendations on, on funding through the state. One of the things that we're seeing now is the state's recognizing that this is an issue, so funding is being channeled through probation and through other channels in order to, you know, allow counties to do a little bit more, you know, of this type of work, where, you know, kind of early recognition programs, you know, to understand like somebody gets, you know, right now, the system is a bit, like a good example would be, right now, the system's a bit fractured, so everybody's kind of working, you know, in their own silos to some degree. You know, one example of an effort could be to, you know, try to work collaboratively to have a system where, you know, there are more early identification systems and that the data that's gathered early on is carried through the entire process. So, if someone's identified to have, like, a mental health issue at the very beginning, whether it be drugs, alcohol, you know, a mental disability, a learning disability, that they're tagged or that there's information at the beginning, so that they can then be channeled in a separate bucket, for instance. You know, to some degree, right now, there are situations where someone gets, you know, there's an issue, and nobody, like, kind of acknowledges or is capable of putting a red flag up until after the person's sentenced, after the person's in, in the jail, you know, maybe depending upon the circumstance. You know, so it's kind of stuff like that, or, you know, how can we work collaboratively? How can we come up with systems that'll help, you know, work smarter with this kind of setup? So, it's stuff like that that they try to provide information on, you know, and then we evaluate and then try to incorporate it in our system.
Did this come up as a result of one of the committees that you serve on?
Yes. This is the, from the Major Health Task Course, their conference, Major Health Task Course. Going to that, you know, everybody was talking about the different stuff they were doing, it was really, really fantastic, and somebody talked about being a stepping up county, and I, and I was like, is that like an exercise routine, or do you guys do aerobics? You know, like, I didn't know what, that's a joke. Not a very good joke, but, um, that, they talked about being a stepping up county, and so I asked, like, what is involved in that, and they basically said that they really felt that it was, it was a very good program for them, just because it had, there are a lot of, like, boilerplate proposals in, in the program, and there's a lot of different communication channels that you get through it that...
So, it's a program, so it's not re-bending the wheel?
Exactly.
It's a program that's already built.
Yeah. Like, um, there, because there are several counties in the state that have been very proactive with this and have had very positive results, and so the idea would be to really communicate with them and, you know, try to duplicate some of those efforts here, you know.
So, is this the same resolution that other counties have used then?
Yes.
Okay.
It's, it's very similar, I mean, I would agree to my original resolution, this is the one that's out there from, like, CCAB or whatever? Well, NACO provides, like, a boilerplate resolution, and then you add information to it. So, Potter County is a part of this, I'm trying to think of all the counties in Pennsylvania, I think Berks County, Chester County, off the look of the official list, I can't remember. That's my attention.
Now, do you want this on for Wednesday's meeting?
If, if we could.
I don't see Wednesday's agenda here either, Pam, is there anything on it?
There's nothing on it.
And question, we haven't had a video recorder for last meeting, or this one, is there a reason?
Um, I left the data card at my house.
Oh, okay.
We're having, experiencing technical difficulties.
Risk accident insurance renewal, I guess we should wait for Pam to come back to take notes.
That's the, oh.
Yeah, we'll wait.
Okay.
That's next up.
Except I will remove the one item.
Yeah. Uh, well, we're talking about the only item that's on the agenda then now, in this renewal acceptance form for special risk accident insurance. And you wanna touch on this, Judy? Do you have this in front of you?
No, no, that's okay.
Okay.
That's the volunteer work release, not work release, excuse me, volunteer work crew accident insurance, and it's paid for out of the prison commissary fund, it doesn't come out of budgeted county funds.
Okay.
Because it's an extra that allows them to do work crew activities, so it benefits them by allowing them to be out of their cells and...
Very good.
Contributing to community service in whatever way.
And it says here, we're, number of participants is 25, and total premium would be $435. That's 400 minimum premium plus a $35 policy administration fee. Seems quite reasonable. All right. Thank you for your explanation on that, Judy. And then the next item, do you have any questions?
Is that a, so, is that a renewal?
Yes.
This is one we picked up last year after we had a renewal.
The next item is...
Have you, have you, I'm assuming your evaluation of it is positive and...
We've had no claims since we've gotten it, so, it's one of those things that's great if we don't need it, you know, we don't need it.
But we did need it, and we didn't have it, so this is a good insurance policy to have, in my opinion. Dot gov, letter of request.
So, that's something I sent to you folks last night, while I was transferring the website for new host. I brought up the idea of going through a dot gov domain name. This is something that's a huge part of our, but I thought I would just bring it up, you know, just because it felt like it was kind of, we're at the point of, like, shifting away, you know, like, moving on and doing some different things with the website again. Basically, a dot gov is just an official government domain name that you have to apply to the government to get, and it's, it's a bit more official, it has, you know, there's certain things with search engine optimization, stuff that it proves upon and identifies it as a, as a government entity. I just like the idea of having a dot gov website. Now, the, the real problem is gonna be for Bill, to be honest, because Bill would have to do some work as far as, you know, turning it over to a dot gov setup.
As a move of workforce, we need to reissue the digital certificate to that new domain name to be able to interact with the government sites that, whether it's state police, AOPC, they need to recognize their site, but it's not something we haven't done before, so we can certainly accommodate it, it's just, it'll, some work for us to, to do, so.
I, I might get set it up, we could coordinate with you, so that it was at a time when we didn't have some big project.
Yeah, plenty more, so...
Between the five minutes that you have, you're not...
We're at five minutes. Yeah, so it's, it would be a project-type cut-over, you know, I think that the biggest issue is relevant to our email addressing and...
Well, that's a big thing.
And we wanna make sure that we allow both domains to coexist for a period of time, because when you tell people that our email addresses are changing, that just has some confusion, so you need to let, you know, the two domains coexist until the other one kind of dies on the line, you know. So, it's just a process that, you know, we need to go through, so. It's something that we can accommodate, it's just right there.
Are there additional security requirements for using the dot gov?
There are definitely more mandated responsibilities for the site, but I, I mean, the, I don't, I don't foresee any problem accommodating them.
Yeah, we have to, what we do right now at the network level is a pretty high bar relative to security. The domain-level security really doesn't change. The administrative side of, the registration of the dot gov is different, but really, that's the change, is the difference on the dot gov registration. What we do and how we handle the network-level security and how we manage our domain really won't change. It's, it's really more the administrative side of the, the registrations.
So, registration, is that free to...
No, that's, it's, I'm, $400 here.
And is that about affordable, do we use the dot US now?
We use the dot net, we have two dot nets, they're much cheaper.
Yeah, they are.
It would definitely cost more to have a dot gov.
Yeah, so there's a difference in cost, and there's a difference in the, the administration. Dot gov's are administered through the government, whereas dot nets, dot coms, dot, you know, and all the others are administered in the private enterprise, and that's really the difference. But how we handle our security underneath the registrations really doesn't change, so it's more the administration of the registration, and all that occurs is different. Transitioning is a project, but that would be no different than transitioning even if it was a change in the private enterprise, the ring space, if that makes sense. So, it's a project for us to change. Dot gov's are administered differently, but it's really not a change in security approach for us. We need to maintain the same level and same type of security.
I would just say that in terms of me as coming to a website that says dot gov, I have, I, I think I would assume that that site's more credible, I'm not gonna be as concerned about it as I would be if it's something else. I'm gonna assume that there's some additional security there, so.
Yeah, it, that's good, you know, that you feel like technically there isn't, but, you know, it's...
Feelings are important, though.
Feelings aren't, as a tech guy, but yeah, it's, I'm glad that you feel that way, that transition helps people feel better, that's awesome, you know, so.
All right. Any questions? Okay. Anything further from anyone?
Couple items, real quick, we are, additional work on the telephone system, we are transitioning 65 phones on July 26th, so that is Wednesday, that's occurring. We are, we just, you just asked about this today, we've been collecting data on our network printers, and we'll be recommending, probably at a subsequent meeting, to have the commissioners and fiscal work with a, create a blanket purchase order to allow the system to create reorder points, so that toners, consumables for printers are automated and they're reordering, so that we don't have this process of, you know, sending requisitions down one at a time for a toner cartridge, because that's, I don't know how many orders a year, but it's in the hundreds, and it's, it's just a process of, you know, one at a time, two at a time, and it's, it's just a unnecessary process, so we think we're gonna reduce costs. We've got a, a program that's running, getting paper counts to 100 levels, and collecting data to actually get to the point where we can reorder, set those reorder points, create the order, create the expense item, you know, basically, that would be same as a requisition. So, automate that process, so we, we hope to probably launch it at the first part of August. So, we'll probably bring that to the commissioners to formalize a purchase blanket or purchase request with the vendor, you know, so that we can get that, get that moving forward. So, that's a little, kind of a little task that we're working on, you know, inside.
You're gonna find out, too, if they'll take cartridges back around, or...
Yeah, if I can force them to do that, that would be nice, to say, hey, since you're going to be our vendor on this automated reorder process, how about taking the cartridges of the toner cartridges that, you know, we use as well? So, that, that process should eliminate a lot of manual paperwork and requisitioning, and, you know, it, it doesn't sound like a lot, but I, it's, there's a lot of time consumed internally just to, you know, order five, six hundred things a year, you know, just kind of crazy. Any questions, anybody in here that's...
How does that work, like, with my, my printer? Part of my lease, lease is that they provide...
Correct. So, we, what we're doing right now, so we, we're collecting all that, and we'll continue to collect paper counts and toner levels, we flag the, flag the departments and we flag the devices, which ones are on lease, and have a lease that includes maintenance and ton, and consumables. If they include maintenance and consumables, we set the reorder point to basically none, so that you won't trigger a reorder, because yours are fulfilled by a vendor, right? We could, you know, this is kind of a sponsored, we could potentially trigger something that lets Schwab, the vendor you have yours with, that, hey, it's time to ship one in. So, even though the software is reordering with a vendor that we're purchasing from, we could potentially create reorders for non, you know, ones that are actually part of the maintenance, so I'll look into that, see if we can do that as well, you know, that would be, you know, take that burden off of you as well, because right now, you have to, even though it's part of your lease, you still have to say...
I can call them and say...
So, it's not an automatic ship, like, once they ship them?
Yeah, so let me see, we can call them and tell them that we're running low.
As usual, Ed, you're special.
So, we have, we have 10, well, 15 devices like that, so if I can set your reorder up, even though the cost is part of your lease, if I can set your reorder up with that second vendor, I'll try to see if we can achieve that as well. And in that way, you know, when it's based on your usage, you know, if it's down to 3%, 5%, another, you know, cartridge or so, they're all going to ship to the fiscal. You know, we're not gonna, because UPS doesn't deliver to every department, and IT doesn't wanna receive these and run them up to every department, so they'll ship to fiscal so they can receive them and notify the department, hey, your cartridge is here, you know, I think. So, that's just another, you know, it's, they're a little side thing that we're gonna try to do to make things a little bit more efficient process-wise.
When you find out what happens with the used cartridges, we need to educate the employees better, too, because Angela Stephanie just went down to the mailroom today and brought back, if you see, a huge stack of cartridges down there, they all should've been shipped back, they had shipping labels inside the boxes, and people just don't, a lot of, not everyone, a lot of people just don't open the box and put the label on there, I guess they think it's just instruction they, or so.
The, the policy used to be that you put your expended ones down in the mailroom.
The expended ones that go to the mailroom are the ones that are not recyclable, and we have a different person that comes and picks those up, these other ones ship back directly to Hewlett-Packard and whatever, and they, they do whatever with them. But, yeah, they're, and that's why we have to educate the employees, because we have two different procedures to follow, depending on which one you have, and just flat out even knowing which one you have is like...
It's if we clean that up, it's a byproduct of this little project, so.
I didn't realize the pile down there had gotten so big, we had a couple of them in the room, and they said, well, what do we do with these? I said, well, we just put the label on and send them back, and I don't know why, they decided to go down there and check, and now we have a huge, tall stack in there that when UPS comes, they're gonna have to take it back out of here.
It is so staggering how many cartridges we go through in the way of consumables, I mean, it's just...
We, we order cartridges for someone every week, and it's, that's where the freebies will all come from, for the pickings, so I'm not gonna, we won't get those anymore.
So, anyhow, this is just a side part of the project, that, you know, it's not really taking time, but it's just something that will change process a little bit on how we do things, so we'll have to coordinate with fiscal and get approval from the commissioners.
I'd like to know the other options, too, for domestic relations and 911, or is it just here?
AOPC has approved the cartridge selection, because AOPC has their printers in here that we do not service. We'll check in with PACES, another state agency, to make sure that they'll allow our cartridges, not our cartridges, but cartridges from the vendor, and we need to get their approval as well, because we do not service those printers, so the, we need to get authorization. But so far, we've gotten agreement with state agencies that you can use these cartridges in our, meaning their printers. Gotta get approval from everybody. So, yes, we'll check with the message as well, because I think they can use all the papers. So, just under side name.
Uh, like a good toner discussion.
Yeah.
It's always exciting. Where's, where's the Tim Horton's box?
Ed, do you have anything?
I do not.
No? Judy, anything more? Lori? No? Keith? Pam? Okay.
Nobody can...
At our desk.
I do have one issue, I want to just raise your attention, one, the, I'm a board member of kind of our creek watershed association, I'm here today as a citizen, but there's an issue, there's the Vulcan and watershed that I think anyone in Warren County should know about, and that has to do with what's happening in New York State. Watershed is connected, so, you know, they, they go beyond the boundaries, the political boundaries. Right now, there's a project that started in Chautauqua Lake that involves the application... Right now, there's a project that started in Chautauqua Lake that involves the application of herbicides to kill invasive species. Right now, it's a test project, it's gone through a permanent process with their Department of Environmental Conservation up there, but it's something that I've heard, and I don't believe there's been a plan proposed yet, but it's going to involve putting a lot more pesticide in Chautauqua Lake. Chautauqua Lake, for us, we don't know, is in Kinda Longo Creek watershed. Every drop of water that flows out of that lake that does not evaporate flows into the Kinda Longo and by some of our homes and into the Allegheny River. Just to give you a historic perspective on this, in nineteen oh five, when people were still dying of typhoid, a USGS scientist went out and studied it, and he said, guy by the name of Samuel Lewis, he said, "Kinda Longo Creek, which enters Allegheny River at Warren, carries the sewage of Jamestown, New York, population twenty-five thousand men, where there are numerous industrial enterprises called which pour their waste into the creek, and the most densely populated districts of the city, the buildings are directly on or overhanging stream, some of that still happens, so that dejecta from typhoid patients in these buildings enter the creek directly and are carried down to the Allegheny River." People are dying of water in that. The point being that a hundred and twelve years later, the stream is still coming south from Chautauqua, eighty percent of the Kinda Longo Creek watershed is in New York State. It's important for us who are downstream in the watershed to know what's happening upstream in the watershed. I happen to have with me a couple document, or a document that I did not write, and I'm just handing out for information purposes, I can support this, and it does have some good information there more again. This was handed to me by, this is actually up in New York State, paddling at Casadee Lake, and the boat, what do they call it, the boat steward, who checks her boat before he gets in the water and after he gets out, handed me this. He was wearing a Chautauqua Lake Association shirt, apparently worked for them. There's a lot of dispute up in New York about whether or not they should go through with these herbicide applications. When they do this, this involves basically shutting down the lake to things like swimming, fishing, pets can't drink out of the water for a period of time, so you know what, problems that can cause if you live along the lake, but what problems would it cause for those of us downstream, just pets are drinking Kinda Longo Creek, for example, and I don't even know what happens with wildlife, and obviously.
Couldn't have power to contact wildlife.
They are, they're not creating a sign. So anyway, it's an issue that's just emerging, and it is going to affect us. This is actually going to be a topic for discussion at the Chautauqua County Legislature meeting this coming Wednesday night. I really don't know what kind of interaction Warren County has with Chautauqua, I don't know what the protocols are, but this could be an opportunity for Warren County to show up and at least hear what's happening there, and at least perhaps show some concern for what happens upstream in New York State and Chautauqua County.
When did you say the meeting was?
It's six thirty this Wednesday, and it's in Midville, I believe.
Are they trying to kill the blooms?
So they have a lot of invasive weeds there, and if they're fishing or anything, you know, the weeds are pretty bad.
That would be probably from, you know, the stuff that's going in the lake already.
These are invasive weeds that are the problem.
Because the weeds, not the.
So it's, yeah, the weeds get in into the boats, it's hard to even kayak in some places up there. They actually, Chautauqua Lake Association has these underwater relief or weed arborist machines, they actually are cutting weeds so the boats can be in there, but.
Cutting weeds is just a temporary thing, it's just going to grow back.
They've been doing it for years, they've also tried herbicides in the past, they've had mixed results, but Chautauqua Lake Association has considered this, and they don't like the idea of applying herbicides, so it's a very technical issue, and I'm not going to suggest, I understand all the scientific outcomes, if you talk to the industry folks, I think they'll say it's very safe, both of these herbicides we're using are safe, or as safe as we could expect them to be, but then there are going to be people who are concerned about that. When you tell somebody that's going for fourteen days, that probably suggests that.
There's some concern.
There's concern.
Well, it'd be interesting to hear a case study from another lake that this has occurred in to see what their experience was.
Right. And, you know, I've also tried to determine whether New York State has any of the DPD notice, and according to someone DPD who I contacted, there is no agreement, so they can pretty much do anything upstream they want to without telling us apparently, you know, whether they have in the past or wouldn't future, I don't know. If there's any kind of environmental assessment however, I would highly recommend that we think about getting a water monitor at the state line. If folks doing some project that could impact us, they should pay for that, it seems to me, just to make sure that nothing toxic is coming into our waterways. I believe, by the way, that this meeting could be livestreamed, so if you can't actually attend, you might be able to watch it or get transcript afterwards, then we'll say.
I've only had a handful of interactions with them through like different joint events and stuff, and generally, my experience has been very good, so I don't think they'd have a problem with us contacting them and discussing this.
Right. I think if there could be some communication, I think that would be the primary objective right now. I would like to thank the Pennsylvania Government, DPD, DCNR, would be notified or would know that this is going on and could have some input.
Minimum awareness when they do things, you know.
Right. And I'm assuming that if they do an application up there that requires posting for not swimming or, you know, fishing, Pennsylvania's going to be notified of that, since we'll be giving them water.
I wonder how far that flows downstream, do we have a non-swimming, non-fishing issue for free security? I mean, I realize it gets diluted more and more as it flows down along all the other little tributaries that streams will flow in, but still, it's there.
A question needs to be answered in this process.
This is the discussion I always have with people down in Pittsburgh, when I was down there, because we'd go across the bridge and go, we'd be on the, you know, on the riverfront, and there'd be people swimming in it, and I'd start laughing, and everybody would be like, why are we so funny? And I'd say, do you know where this water comes from? And they'd say, there are a hundred towns on the way up that river, you know, and all of them are, you know, by the time it gets down here, I mean, you know, it just, it all flows down river, as they say.
Exactly, and it's my understanding that over a million people in Pennsylvania still are drinking water from the Allegheny River. So it really impacts us, but it would seem to me that those, their water quality is very mattered, the water going into those water treatment plants, might be they need to know what's going in there.
This, I mean, this seems like a pretty extreme solution to this, and this is a problem that seems pretty common with tourist, you know, resort type lakes. I'm aware of one other one in the region where they, because everybody had properly handled, you know, sewage, waste water, everything that had flown into the lake, and then basically generated fertilizer, that then grew all the algae to such an extent that nobody could, and they had to put in a bunch of ordinances in order to force everybody to deal with their wastewater to a greater extent, and it wouldn't surprise me if Chautauqua, just due to its size, is in the same boat where there's a lot of chemicals from the houses and everything else that are going into the lake that are creating fertilizer, that's like.
Oddly, what happens with some shallow lakes, where they come in the shallow, is that as water has become clearer because of less garbage influence, more sun can get down towards the bottom and actually foliage can grow, so it's this weird dynamics of the water is actually cleaner and clearer, and now foliage can grow up along the banks better, so it's, you know, it becomes a problem.
Yeah, it is actually a worthy issue up here, in fact, this is all about invasive species, and why they're being studied, and as new species get into the waterways, in fact, we're worried that some of these are going to come downstream and visiting us soon, but the zebra mussels are rampant in Chautauqua Lake.
They clear the lake up.
We pulled up some garbage out of Chautauqua Lake, a shopping cart, it was coated with these mussels, but they purify the water, they clarify the water.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so they make the water clearer, which makes the invasive weeds that are in the lake grow back, and so that is the problem. One of the problems with using herbicides is it kills the weed that's in there, which then sinks to the bottom, decays, and eats up all the oxygen in the lake, which has a bad effect on fish, of course, and a lot of other things, and causes algae blooms. So there are a lot of ramifications to using it, so besides, there are going to have to be thought through, I just hope that Pennsylvanians get a chance to chime in.
Yeah, thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Those were exciting, like toner cartridges.
Yes.
Man, that's a great edit, though.
More of it.
In the recycling.
I have it in his computer.
How's the recycling thing go Saturday?
Very good, very good.
There was a hundred and fifty, two hundred appointments, somewhere in there, and it was booked up very quick. I had a really good conversation with all the different people that showed up, and I tried to ask them, you know, how did you hear about the event, you know, what are you bringing? Was it easy to sign up? Everybody had a really easy time signing up. Most of the people were bringing stuff that they had in their basement or garage that had been sitting there for years and they've been trying to figure out how to get rid of, so most of it seemed to be television sets, buckets of paint, you know, appliances of different kinds, and a few other things. About two-thirds of the people had heard about it through the newspaper, either the newspaper article or the ad that Dan ran, and then about a third of them caught it on Facebook, like so, and it seemed to be, there seemed to be a very clear generational gap there, where, you know, all the more seasoned patrons were, I'd seen it through the newspaper, and then a lot of the younger folks had, had pretty caught it on Facebook, so it was pretty clear about two-thirds to a third ratio. And then there were a handful of people that had heard it on the radio, because we had done a press release and I think they figured that, so. Everybody was in a really good mood, it, for the most part, didn't rain, Dan really did a great job setting up, marking a lot up, and there were people that were two or three timers, where they had been to our other two events and had more material or had a relative that they were bringing for the event stuff. It was really good. The next one's in October, it's like the first weekend of October, I think, it's like that eve or something like that, and it's going to be up at Russell Elementary, or the administrative office in the park on the, Saturday.
Great, anyone have anything else?
Fair, come on in.
Oh, yeah, Warren County Fair, you're right, first week of August. What are those dates, do we have? The ninth?
The fifth of August is the, that's the World War II reenactment in Tegu, that's on a Saturday, the fair starts that day, Monday eighth.
So the fifth is a Saturday to you, correct? Yes.
If you've never been to see the reenactment, it is something, something really interesting.
I watched the movie about a thousand times, does that count? Yeah, obviously, eight through four is the third.
And the commissioners will be at CCAT for most of the week, so be there, back by the end of the week. All right, anyone else have anything to add? All right, see y'all next Monday.